Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
I would make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Are there any additions, corrections to it? Not also the minutes as presented and accounts payable as presented.
Most in a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? I did not. I like the number, so it was good. Sure, I'm sure. Keep Jake out of here, we're all right.
Well, I called her yesterday and said, hey, you forgot the engineer. She says, you didn't terminate.
Okay.
Waited to double up, didn't they?
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, listen carries. We have no liquor licenses, public comment, any public comment today? Thank you. I had a short week last week, so I have nothing to report on.
Just want to follow up on one of my points last week after taking board of health meeting. People talked to liaison from Jenny Ed Foundation about the community health program and it sounds and is a fact that the concerns I shared at the last meeting are not concerns available. Provide more information following the meeting. So that's great. Appreciate the work Jenny Ed Foundation is doing. And appreciate having them as partners. I think they're doing a fantastic job. In addition to that, last week, Melbourne Historical Society met and officially thought they built it. About the old ports garage. So that will be the future site of the Melbourne Historical Museum. On at the Melbourne Museum. So they're working on getting some grants, some funding.
Cool.
Yeah, ports garage donations can be done on GoFundMe, can be done on PayPal. And you can drop off a check or cash to the Melbourne Bank. So really looking forward to that. We got a whole bunch of stuff. One of the original fire trucks from Melbourne, one of the Dutch gun club, Melbourne memorabilia from the old high school. So we're really looking forward to that. And other than that, let's see here. Last week Mills County Trail Committee met on Tuesday morning after our board meeting. Going through, I know the original plan was to connect the Glenwood area to Wabash Trace. And they first started that with the parks complex down by Glenwood Lake Park. And so trying to figure out if it's more feasible for funding, if we were to start there. Or if we were to try to start where we were going to continue to trace and kind of work backwards. There's more funding available if traces are, traces and trails are outside of city limits than inside city limits. So working on a few different avenues for that. Other than that, that's everything I have.
Are they still trying to come down Kent Creek?
Yes, yes. It's preliminary meeting. We had some grants that weren't spent the way that were intended. For instance, I believe there was a $90,000 grant that was received. That was supposed to do quite a bit of work down by the sports complex. But at the end of the day, all it could cover was the bridges because of inflation during COVID. So trying to figure out a few of those issues, but I think it's on the right track. Got a good group of people, so.
One thing to look at is the trace catches Gaston Avenue.
Oh, we must start in back there.
Yeah. Gaston Avenue, we have enough right away, all the way along Gaston Avenue. It has hills. You don't have to buy any extra right away across the Silver City Highway and get to it. It's a street he does, so. Good for thought. Appreciate that, Mike. Mr. Crouch?
I went to a pipeline safety meeting. You may not think how many thousands of miles of pipeline there is in the Mills County area. They now have, the pipeline companies themselves have put in what they call pipeline lookers or seekers. There's a pipeline that starts in upper Alaska, ends in Texas. The guy that steps in upper Alaska, it goes down through the Midwest and stuff. And he can read pressure readings from Texas to Alaska. If there's a drop in pressure, his duty is to call the 911 operators in that area to alert them. And they don't have to go out and start searching because it's up to the pipeline people to find it. It's up to our people to secure the area around it. So that's something new that's coming in, you know, so. There's still, there was some talk about the CO2 and stuff. And the gentleman says, I really don't care to get into that because there is no starting point or stopping point right now. South Dakota says, we're not messing with it. So if you have some place to put it, you can hardly attend it. But you and I attended a safety meeting with Amanda on Wednesday morning. Had lunch with John Larson and Mark Norman on economic development. Talked about some new things that could be coming into the area and maybe in the future, some financial support. On Friday, I met with Veterans Affairs. We have gained from 1.2 million to 1.4 million in money coming into the county through the veterans a month. I mean, it sounds like an awful lot of money, but that's the numbers that we get from the state. So I believe they should be right or is supposed to be anyway. I hope that pretty well takes care of my appointments.
Jacob, you're up. Consideration formal action, intermissionaire agreement with Pot County.
So this is just redoing the interment agreement that we had before.
You've been thirty days, haven't you?
Has been. So yeah, it would be effective. Fifteenth, so already been a month. Agreement is increasing the price. From $200 to $215 per hour. And then increasing the price, the engineer myself receiving $70 an hour to $75 per hour. So more for the county, a little bit more for me. And that's still keeping it six hours estimated per weekend to our minimum per day.
They are still advertising and interviewing, correct?
They are. I think they're making some advancement towards getting someone selected permanently. So hopefully something comes to fruition here soon.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve this with discussion.
Second.
A motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, my only thought, I wouldn't be too opposed to having something higher than 215. Why I say that is because I believe that Mills County Board Supervisors, I think Jake, I think the residents have been very gracious during this period of trying to work with them. You know, we want to be good partners. We want to be good neighbors. But I think at the same time, we have to remember why we're in the situation that we're in. We're in the situation that we're in because of three supervisors up there deciding with their engineer, deciding to try to have Jake be and then that plan ultimately falling through. So it's not because of us that we're in the situation that we're in. It's because of them. I would be, I'm okay with 215, but I don't see any problem with us going to 230. Because at the end of the day, if they have another option that is cheaper, they'll take it. We're in a good position. We have the ability to do it. I would be more in favor of 230.
We have a rational contract with them, Billy. We have a contract with them, Billy.
This is a new contract.
This is all new, so anything?
Well, I'm not arguing a little bit, you know, we have to be good neighbors. The shoe could be on the other foot. You know, we have worked with other engineers from other parts, you know, Montgomery County. We've had paid, we went to both of those, back and forth with engineers and things. Back when we did that, we weren't near as expensive as this. So my feeling is 215 hoppers is not a bad price for the county or $75 an hour for the engineer. So, you know, I guess Jack and I are splitting hairs here, but I believe in being good neighbors. You know, they haven't always been up to par with us on some things, but we still have to be able to work with them and help them out when we can.
Yes, my only question to you, Richard, is from the time where I have become, have been a supervisor for the last nine months. There has been no instance where Potawatomi County has been necessarily good neighbors. I mean, the instances that I know is one of their employees being down here and trying to access information for public health to have those grants to then put them into Potawatomi County Public Health. And we had this instance with them trying to take our engineer. So I guess if there is an instance where we've been good neighbors, I haven't seen it over the course of almost a year. I don't want us to be a big brother, little brother situation. And I don't really necessarily know if there is any downside to us trying to get a little bit more funding for the county. That's my view. I could be corrected if there is something you, you know about.
I understand where you're coming from. I'm just, I'm just doing this off of a, of what you call a
If you look at the going rate, 215 an hour plus the 75 an hour between the county and Jake times 40 hours times 52, that's 603,000 a year. So they're already putting it to them.
Well, it's just 215. It's not the extra 75. Because the 215 is just what they give us and then we pay the 75 out of that 215 to Jake. Be 215 times, 40 times 52.
Which is 400 grand a year, which is still mostly, yeah.
Still quite a bit of mine.
Yeah.
Pot County did it for Harris and they did 150, but I think it's kind of like just ballparked with some other
Page County, I don't know if we charged them, did we?
I, not that I'm aware of. We did it as a good neighbor policy, you know, because they had been here and helped us. We turned around and went back and helped them.
We have a motion in a second on the table. Crouch, was your motion for two, to afford the 215 and 70? In a second, is there any other discussion?
This is just for 30 days.
It's 30 days, yeah. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I do agree with you though, Jack. If they could get us the one a second, because they have.
We were in their position and we made all the mistakes that they made. I, I, I 100% think that we'd be charging, they'd be charging us through a group.
We'll buy a trailer, huh?
Actually going to table this item. Couple of weeks ago, we received approval to purchase a trailer. So since some things came to our attention where we just felt we wanted to seek out some other quotes before we actually exchanged anybody. So we've received one other quote. We're waiting to hear back from another one from Ziegler. So once we get that back, hopefully by next week, they can bring out four or two.
So that's one of the
Those not an addition. In place of that one, we have not made purchase on the one more.
What was that trailer through? Was it out in Des Moines?
That one was through down here.
Oh, it was up off?
Double take. By the Ziegler Junction or by the, by the racetrack.
You just want to table it, you know?
So we'll table it.
And now let's turn the table, we'll just, no action taken. What do you got for general discussion there, sir?
General discussion, they have started the overlay on Kid Road in Jasmine Lane. They came in over the weekend and it's patching in Jasmine Lane and now they're overlaying it. Got quite a bit done on the southbound lane yesterday. They're running today, but I don't think they'll quite get finished. So tomorrow they should wrap it up.
Really putting for lifts on that. Is that a
We're just doing an inch and a half of service.
Inch and a half overlay.
Yep, just kind of, and that was always from the beginning of plan, that was Kid Road, like we did.
Yeah.
Most times there used to be gravel, seal coat, and then long-term plant. Some asphalt, so there's only two inches on it now. So kind of putting this on helps prolong the life and adds more structural integrity to it. But I drove it this morning before I came in, in southbound, nice smooth ride. I have a little bit of issues in Jasmine Lane, so I'm talking with the PM out there and I'll talk again today. Some of those patches they did, it's healing up already. So to me, it looks like maybe they didn't get a good tack down or something because it's just not adhering. So we'll have to figure out what's going on there. Yeah, they're on site discussing with him. There are sixty straight box culvert is open and pretty much finished. So we've got it seeded or we'll keep an eye on the seed and wattles if we have to adjust those with upcoming rains and things, but that one is open. And then H12 construction project, had a pre-construction meeting. They're going to start October 1st with milling. They think that'll take probably about a week and then it'll be two to three weeks. Back for temperatures, we'll make range before they lay the asphalt down. So excited to get that done here before the winter. Hopefully weather cooperates. Upset of the warm weather and smooth project there. We did have a, we have an engineering technician position open, so we're a little shorthanded for this project. Between, a good reason or a good example of why I kept my certifications for material testing. I can do concrete, asphalt testing, aggregate, or situations like this, shorthanded. Vance is going to be our main guy out there if he's sick for a day or something, then Kevin and I can jump in and do such a testing, so.
Do we have a place down there where we can break cylinders and?
We don't do cylinders, only the state really does that, but we do beams for flexural strength. Yeah, we have lab down there for all the aggregate testing instead of analysis, beams, things like that.
Good, good.
And last thing, H12 where we ground up for the seal coat, just an update on that. I drove it with the foreman yesterday afternoon. We measured out a number of those, especially on tops of hills. We're getting 23 feet, 25 in some places. We also then went over to Epperson, just picked up a random gravel road for measure 23 on that. So to me, the condition of it right now is typical of a gravel road. The existing condition of that was 22 foot in places, almost no shoulder. So we did not, we're not whitening the road, but we also did not narrow the road. But blading it is helping a lot. So we've had the blade operator out there twice now. He was out there yesterday. That really helps because as traffic goes, then it creates some ruts. Pushes that rock out to the edge, which builds it up, which then creates a steeper drop and then also softer, which can pull you down. So keeping that rock spread out with the crown, not at too steep of an angle, I think is really helping. We are receiving, one complaint yesterday about the dust on that road. I told the guy, I don't really have a good solution for that. If we get into the business of applying dust control in areas like that, I think we're going to open a can of worms. So I told him, I said, I really don't have a good solution for you on that. Something that we may want to consider putting into policy just so that we can point to if people know when we redo these roads, we're not going to apply best control. The other thing on that road would be that I'll just skip my line here. Well, I guess, just following up with some of the people that were in here for discussion, did receive email from them. I'm going to reply back. I didn't get to reply yesterday, so I reply back to them today, kind of where we're at with it. And then another thing that I would suggest, potentially recommend is temporarily lowering the speed limit out there. I think the main issue is not traffic just going down. It's when they're meeting traffic coming onto them and passing, they end up having to slow down. There are some hills there. We could temporarily rarely lower it to 35 mile an hour. Think it will help create a safer situation out there. They might not like it because they can't, you know, get their goods down the road quite as fast. But ultimately, if it's going to be an issue, I think that's something we should explore. Keep it that way until we seal coat it again next year and then open it back up to 55. Just do a temporary resolution on that. So that's kind of what I'm exploring now, having the grader out there. Keep an eye on it. If he's got to hit it weekly or even more of that, and he's been instructed to do that, so. Make sure he's, keep it out of that. So that's kind of where we're at now. Also did run some fun math problems. If we were to widen that road out to 24 foot wide with two foot shoulders, kind of what that would take. And then kind of, you know, some people are saying we built that road up a foot and a half. Kind of what those material numbers, quantities look like. I'm not going to go through them today, but I can share those with you guys later on there. I'm not gonna go through them today, but I'll share those with you guys later on there. Kind of interesting to see the, the magnitude of those numbers.
Well, I drove it twice yesterday, both direction east to west, west to east, whichever way. The biggest problem is speed. Uh, when you would, I, I just slowed down to thirty-five mile an hour, but. Uh, if they were going east, uh, the dust on the road, uh, when you leave dust at this hilltop, this valley. And you're going over the hill a mile away and you still can't see where you've been. Uh, I would say speed is a big problem. Uh, people may not like that sound, but. A, a reduction in speed would not hurt anything at this time. Uh, width wise and stuff, yes, the shoulders are soft. You wanna wander over there. You can feel it pull you down. Uh. It's, it's a normal process in redoing a road. Uh, you know, I don't care whether we tore it up and made a whole new road out of it to maybe pave it or something. You'd still have this same problem till it settles down. And hopefully the rain coming in this. Here in the next three, four days, does something for us because that would help more than anything. And I would really like to, uh. Put a word in for the great, greater operator. He has really laid that road out, I would say. Sufficient and in width and stuff, yes, if you gotta get over, you better slow down and hang on. That's just my opinion.
Talking about H twelve. Same gentleman that I was. Got to you yesterday. Um, stopped by my house yesterday evening in Henderson that was talking to me about the road and I guess my. My kind, I, I guess I don't have the numbers off my head. So how much does it cost to spray down a road like that? Per?
Dust control?
Yeah, per, you know, half mile, mile.
A buck fifty a foot?
It's at least, yeah.
So potentially a buck fifty a foot. So.
And it's.
Per mile, when you're looking at seven thousand, seven thousand.
How long does that even last?
They do two applications a year. So one in May and one in July.
Right. And it comes back when it rains, but if you have a dry year, it doesn't last. That's the whole thing. I think it's, it's very hit and miss depending upon the weather.
Yeah. I had, I will say, I kinda, I mean, I understand our viewpoint with the money aspect of it. But I kind of feel for the folks living there who. Bought a house on a seal coat road. And so I was just wondering, would it be beneficial for our policy? If we said that we weren't going to do it, as you mentioned, or saying that we were for instances like this where it's gonna be left for a year. Um, because you know, they were expecting to live on a seal coat road. I guess it's just something I'd like to think about.
No, I do empathize with them too.
Yeah.
You know, I think I would feel the same way, but.
We dealt with this one. We did the one with the South of Malvern all the way around off. It was the same thing. Cause we, we washouts were more of a. Problem there just because of the moisture underground. They were getting figured out.
Then another thing, if we would treat the road, we shouldn't blade it because it will pretty well destroy.
You can't blade it.
The, the chemical that we put down.
Yeah, that's an issue, you know, just with everyone else that does get dust control for their homes is. It gets washboarded and then you come and blade it and then they're upset that we blade it. So they just paid for that. So. I mean, four, it's what, four miles long out there. So for uh, seven thousand, I mean, thirty grand.
Yeah.
I got thirty thousand dollars for a little bit of help, maybe three days.
If we are having to blade it once a week. How long is that thirty grand gonna last? So.
That makes sense. I was just, I just wondered.
It's a lot.
A lot of the dust come down, true, two things like that. Um, a good thing, so no, I, I told you this is, you know, we did receive similar complaints on, on just L sixty-eight that my Malvern. And that one, we did let it sit for a year, but there's still some overlap by the time the contractor can get there. So it was ground up and left as a gravel road for about a month, maybe two and. Similar complaints, road's too narrow. Why did you narrow it out? It's steep. Once we seal coat it, we receive zero complaints again. So. It's kind of an illusion, I guess, when it's hard surface versus rock, even though the dimensions are the same. So I suspect that it's gonna happen on H twelve, once it is seal coated and we're not gonna get these complaints of it being there without. But I realize there is some challenges until that happens.
Sure.
So what we have left is seal coat out there in places. Yesterday I noticed they're already starting to bow out. Where the heavy traffic, tough traffic's loaded, especially on the. East or westbound lanes. Uh, you can feel it in the pickup. You can also see it. Uh, next spring we will have uh. Boil outs or whatever you wanna call them on a lot of places just because of the. Many loads that's gonna go down and blow yet that year.
Right now we're looking at that, the wheel ruts. Um, that creates a dangerous situation in the winter. Is the pile will just skim over the top of that and then you'll get ice in that where the wheel piles are. Uh, you can correct that with some slurry leveling, which I got, I did get a quote for that up on, um, Harris. So kind of east of Mineola. Um, it's a little more expensive than I thought, but that would be the correction for that road too. All takes money, but.
It does. You keep getting bigger and bigger.
Yep. And you really do notice the direction of it. Same thing, one hundred ninety-fifth street going north, you'll see a lot more broken concrete. Because the loaded trucks are going out and then empty coming back. And so just the difference of those lanes. You can see how one's holding up better than the other. Same out there.
Good. Anything else yet?
That's everything.
Good. Thank you, sir. Amanda Reed, safety coordinator, our condition, consideration for formal action with safety policy.
Yeah, we wanna get anyone in place. I think the last one I saw was from ninety-nine. So I think we might be due.
Couple of years ago.
Just a while ago. Um, actually Travis was the one that made the policy. I changed only a couple of things in it, mostly because. The original policy that he had drafted had us meeting monthly and I didn't wanna commit to something that may not be able to happen. So I did it as quarterly instead. For the safety committee, but I think you guys all got a copy of it when I sent out the minutes from the meeting that we had. Which I think was fairly productive moving forward. I think it'll be a lot easier.
As a county attorney, as a county attorney's office reviewed this as well or?
I don't believe so.
I would wait, have them take, if you get it, just see if there's anything to need, eyes need dotted or need to be crossed. Thank you. When would you implement this?
Um, as soon as I can.
Good, good. Why don't you get it to the county attorney's office and then sort of.
Did you get my email for the safety minutes? Because it was included in that. There were different. Did you send it to me or is it all department heads?
We have a copy of it here to show. So we, we, we can make you one. I'll drop one off down there to make sure you guys have our copy.
I got a packet.
Yeah, that's one. It's in there.
Well, this will be up to you, Amanda. The one thing that is, just caught my eye since I've been here is going to the auditor's office, there's a fire map. And it shows the escape plan and the different rooms in the courthouse. This is the county engineer's office and then there's the board of supervisors office. So.
Yes.
We might need to be redoing some.
A lot of things need updated actually. Yeah. One of the things that when I gave them the packet that she was talking about, it's because. It had a listing of in your office, is this up to date? Is this current? Is it any, they're gonna check for me so that every department can let me know and give me feedback. So I know we might need to address.
Well, thanks, Seth.
Hopefully.
Make sure the bucks on each, so we can make sure everybody.
Everybody replies to it, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get a hold of them.
That's it. That's what we're working on.
You guys okay with that?
Yep.
Send the county attorney to look at it. Put it on the agenda for next weekend. Thank you very much. Rachel Reese, director of beauty health, Jenny Edmondson Foundation. Shortly update on Rachel, beauty health.
So making the rounds, Jack, we're down here in St. Schule.
Yeah.
Um, thank you, Jack, for the clarification or the question back. Um, so, uh, Ben has been in his role now for three months. Um, so as a whole, we kind of created these benchmarks to kind of guide us towards making sure that we're staying on track and making sure that we're actually making impact. So as to date, at the time of this report, which was last week when we finished. He had thirteen open cases, he had fifty-one cases to date, and those cases run from everything from like rent utility systems to getting connected to Medicaid or uh. So transportation, whatever it is that person. Um, and we do an intake with anybody that comes to our orders. So that's usually about thirty minutes to an hour, depending on how much the person talks and how much information. Um, we are currently looking at data that shows us the return on investment for each community health worker that we have. So looking at data of like. How much, um, sort of pressure has there been on the system prior to that intervention where the community health worker comes into play? And then what was the impact after? So you're looking at EMS data, you're looking at police data, you're looking at sheriff data, you're looking at hospital data and data as well. And then we determine the cost and the impact of all that. So we're working on that as well. Um, we held our first, uh, caring for communities Mills County. Community meeting where we brought together partners that have data sharing agreements together. So that included public health, um, sheriff. Um, police and fire and then the Mills, and then the clinic here as well. Um, and I think we had a really good conversation about some of the people that we needed to, um, have talked through cases. Who else needs to be at the table and like kind of what our processes were and everything like that. Um, so that's been going well. As you can see, Ben has met with. A lot of different people and really kind of connected and really. Sure that landlords know who he is, um, community knows who he is, how to get ahold of him and different things like that. We have the money keys here. Um, Hy-Vee, Maholins and the Dollar General are all gift cards. Um, the gift cards are not bought out of county funds. Um, I will say that the Maholins and Dollar General were purchased within the old administration of public health. But from this point forward, all of our gift cards do not come out of the county budget. They are on the Jenny Ann budget only. Um, and the reason we use those, and I think Jack and I have had a very healthy conversation around this. Is we use it either as a carrot to get that person to continue to work with us. Um, or we use it as a negotiation to keep that person housed. Cause sometimes if they're losing housing and we don't have another place for them to go, we can say. I'm gonna give you a hundred bucks to buy groceries. Then maybe your uncle, brother, sister will let you stay on their couch for a little bit if you bring a hundred bucks in groceries. And so that's housing problem solving and it's a, it's a best practice that we've seen that works across the nation. And so we wanna kind of keep in line with those pieces. Um, one thing that Ben does do around gift cards, cause I know like Jack has expressed concerns about that, is that he does ask for a receipt. So. If you come into our office and you say, I, I am food insecure. I don't know where my next meal's coming from. And he says, great, I'll give you a Hy-Vee gift card or a Russ's gift card or Dollar General gift card. What he then says is if you, um, bring back your receipt or text me your receipt, what you spent those dollars on with your gift card. Then the next time you come back in two weeks or something like that and you ask for another one, I'm more apt to give you one because I can see that you actually spent it correctly. Now, if you're coming back the next day and you spend it differently, you're not getting a gift card. So there's some pieces of accountability and we're gonna look at how we can expand that out. Within the rest of our community health workers, but something Ben did just because Ben is Ben.
Ben is a good guy.
And he likes to dot his i's and cross his t's. Um, so I appreciate that. Um, you can see, we actually have had now two general relief spaces. So, um. But at the point of when this was done, we only have one that went through. So we'll start kind of those conversations around general relief. Some simulations on like, if we took, we changed this restriction, how would that impact? If we updated this, what would that impact? So he's running all of those pieces for me right now. So that way then we can come with actual data and information. Um, so we've done some home modifications. We've done a lot of mortgage and utilities. Um, travel, that can make anything from like, we did a lift ride to get them to the hospital or get them to the clinic or get them somewhere else. Um, and then home-based care is usually in home health or. So.
On that note, Spico is, is working on a program with Jenny Edmondson.
Yeah.
With Pot County and Mills County. Uh, was put the right letter of support next week for them to get this grant. And we'll work for two years. So I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. So we met with them, um, last week and I mean, I think it was a really big conversation. It's really preliminary right now. So I can't say too much, but I do know that we're, we recognize that transportation security is the biggest barrier. For the people that live here. And so how do we support that and make sure that even the people in town can even get to get their groceries? Get to healthcare, whatever that looks like. Um, so I think John Curti and myself and Tara had a really solid conversation. Um, but we don't have anything firm done yet. Um, so we'll start working through, we're meeting, I think, again at the end of the month. To start working through some numbers and some actual scenarios of what that could look like. Um, because we wanna make it also available to our partners as well and not generate any things like CHI as well. So if we can partner with CHI. And come together and do something like this, I think that would be more fruitful.
Right. But I think it's a good idea. I mean, it, it all comes through grant money and.
Yeah.
No cost to the cities or the citizens makes a large difference. You know, whether they go for.
We just have to work through what it'll cost our hospital.
Yep.
Yeah.
With the. Two general relief, now I know the first one was total seven hundred dollars. Uh, that could be used for utilities and rental assistance, different things. So do you keep track, I'm sure. Uh, I'm, I'm almost sure that you do of what actually it was specifically for. I guess why I asked that, was that general relief that we have here on that sheet? Was that rental assistance?
That was rental assistance. So, um, what I think I'll do, um, next time is I can also, um, I can show you guys privately, we keep a ledger. So we, we do double entries. So we keep a ledger of everything that is spent by client name. So we have that. Uh, specifically down so that way we can go back and kind of monitor that. We then have our client database that we utilize, unite us, which is basically a community-based, web-based database that allows basically any of our partners to see what's being done with that client. That information is also inputted and documented into their file in there. So that way then, let's say we have a person that comes in. They're sixty and older. They live in Mills County. They're working with it, with, with Ben. Ben can pull it up and see, oh, they've also worked with connections area agency on aging that connected to resources. So rather than duplicating resources, we communicate with them and saying. All right, do you want to continue working with this person or can we take it on or what? How do we make sure that we're working together? So that way we don't see so much interagency fighting and it's more collaborative. And so that it's double documented in both those places. That helps us.
Good deal. I have that, Rachel. Thank you for doing what you're doing. Yeah.
It's so long.
Good.
The question of it.
I would say another, I said this at the board, I was. Uh, at the super board meeting, our last super board meeting, Matt Gray was there and he was able to talk about the. Massive benefits that the program is doing for Lynnwood Fire. And I've been able to talk to a lot of other people and talk about the benefits of the program. So very appreciative of what you're going to do.
I would kind of give some intentional, um, outreach just to make sure that the rest of the county does know that he is available to them. We are seeing a small uptake in people that are from helper and that are accessing it. Um, but we wanna make sure that the whole county, um, is accessing it. So, uh, if there's a place that you want, why don't you come? Pitch up with people, always open to do that and let people know. Um, so we're just trying to make sure that those that need it can access it against.
Excellent. Thank you. Greg Schultz with No Donuts again, general discussion I want you like to speak about today.
I'll be brief. Um, it'll be in the hiring process. We have application documents tomorrow until. For the, I'm sorry, three o'clock. When we purchase position, um, as of this morning. We had. I believe thirty-six application.
Thirty-six, yeah.
We can make the deputy positions, if they weekends off, I think we have better app. We'll work on that. Um. Uh, next week I plan to bring to you a request for permission. We've been through the process for sort of by case. Sorry about the case of departure. We have it open. We go through the interview and testing process and they'll bring me anything.
Good.
Might have to, you just get to that and talk to you a little.
Good.
That's where I'm at.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Why you get there just exactly for today, you son?
No.
You help with that. Mr. Benz.
Proven here with admin assistant.
Yes, finished up the uh interview process for the admin assistant position. I would like for a request permission. Stacy Salyers. Position administrative assistant. Starting salary is fifty-two thousand, with like customary six-month probation. She can say it all, where she can check and the first day would be September twenty.
So like when?
First time this.
That's right.
Yeah, Stacy, I think, the very fourth office for, I think around fifteen years, a lot of good experience, good first man. Already established working relationship with all her companies, so I'm excited to get her on. There were a lot of excellent applicants, it was a, it was a tough process.
Salyers.
Salyers.
Six months, if not six years, it's Salyers.
Yeah, I think, I had to confirm that this one, so make sure.
Uh, this is a six-month probation, you say?
Yeah, yeah, standard six-month for all employees, I think, so it's in the two thousand.
Was she have to go through the six-month probation and she's been here for fifteen years or is it, is it a different position?
Uh, it's not a.
Just a question.
Just because it's technically.
Okay, right.
I'll make a motion to hire Stacy Salyers, starting September twenty-second for administrative assistant in the IT department for a starting salary of sixty-two thousand. In a six-month probationary period.
Second.
Motion to the second to approve the hire of the admin assistant Stacy Salyers for a salary of sixty-two thousand a year on a six-month probation. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yep. Good, I think.
Yeah, so.
How long was that position open?
Hard to find qualified people for that one.
Yeah. Yeah, this time around, it's a lot better to turn out. For what's happening.
Good. Glad you have that. Glad you have that.
Excited when you're starting, yep. Thank you.
Amber, you are.
So I have, I gave you guys each copy of the budget amendment along with a sheet uh breakdown of where all that might's gonna go. Just as a reminder, we have public care next week. So I wanted, you guys have to take a look at, if you have questions throughout the week, let me know, we'll have you answer them. Our public game will be on Tuesday at eight-thirty and there are also copies of this over there if the public would like to see it. So that's all I had on that. Uh, so I also have finished the interviewing process and have selected someone for my open admin assistant accountable position. Um, Caitlin Wickman. I did very well. I had a lot of really good candidates, too. It was really hard to pick one.
Caitlin Wickman?
Yep, I think she will round out our team quite nicely. She will actually start tomorrow, um, starting wage of twenty-five thirty-eight an hour with a six-month probationary period as well.
Twenty-five thirty-eight?
I would make a motion to approve hire of administrative assistant, county payable clerk. At twenty-five thirty-eight per hour.
Second.
Motion to the second to approve the hire of the administrative assistant and county's payable clerk, Caitlin Wickman for twenty-five thirty-eight an hour for a six-month probation. Is there any discussion?
I wanna, I've had a lot of questions about this, but I want to be pretty clear that these are positions that have already been here. You know, it's not like we're creating new positions.
Changing the job count.
Changing the job title. With the administrative assistant. I'm gonna have the same question with facilities, safety coordinator. What, what specific duties has changed from the last position to this position? What more are they gonna be taking on, I guess?
So the county's payable clerk was originally a part-time position. Um, so that work can be done part-time. So and the other time I would like, just have a more broad job range of things they can do. I want them to help with getting ready for meetings and, and different things like that, that would really free up some of my time.
Stress.
Being ready for meetings, yeah, it's frustrating with payroll and different things. But just to kind of round out our team, I spend a couple hours every week working on the meeting and that couple hours every week would be much more useful in other capacities, so.
Absolutely. Good, any more discussion? Hearing then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next item is consideration formal action, approve the hire of, of the facility safety director, safety coordinator position.
Yeah, so um have uh Chad Rasmussen, hire him.
Chad?
Chad. Yep. Um, he will start September twenty-ninth, starting wage of twenty-five sixty-two an hour with a six-month probationary period. And I should note that both of these um candidates have passed all their creative tests, sorry. Um, his position um will be a work in progress as we work through to see how it's going to work. I did not end up changing the job description because he will still have to do some safety things with Amanda to make sure that. Like, um, uh, there will be some janitorial dues, there'll also be duties where he meets with department heads and we hopefully start to combine some, you know, uh make sure that we're getting the best deal promoting or whatever we're doing. It, it kind of starts to work towards working together as a big team instead of each individual departments.
Yeah, what do you think, guys?
I'll make a motion to approve the hire of Chad Rasmussen as a full-time facility safety coordinator beginning on Monday, September twenty-ninth. Starting wage of twenty-five thousand six, sixty-two cents an hour with a six-month probationary periods.
Are we going to uh try and incorporate, you know, the annex?
Or just think of that in a little discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll second that.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
That's good.
I was just wondering if we're gonna expand him that far out or do you think he'd be busy enough here with the job title and duties that he has?
As far as like.
Going down there and, and cleaning and taking care of that facility.
That, I think we're gonna try to make sure that that's all taken care of. I'm not sure how that looks at, if it'll be him or if it'll be.
Some other independent company or?
I don't, I don't know about that. I, but we're gonna work to make sure, you know, it's gonna take some time to figure out the best schedule of things. But I think with an extra person, that is also a much anteriable.
Two can handle it. We, we have one handling it for many years, so.
Yeah.
Two can handle it.
I know to add to that, Richard, I was down at the annex, maybe, maybe two, three weeks ago and um they've been starting to have some of the homemakers on the occasions where they are not doing uh home visits, they've been starting to clean up around the annex building. So I, I think the annex building is pretty well under control in that nature. But it would be good to expand it past the.
Any other discussion? Hearing then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is consideration formal action, authorize the chair to sign participation release form for additional opioid settlements.
So um, there are two more, actually. I have Sandoz and then also secondary manufacturers. I'm waiting for the actual agreement from secondary manufacturers, but I would like permission to get them both signed so we can get them off by September thirtieth. And they're similar. I think you've looked at them. So. But yeah, if I can get permission to have both of those signed up on so we can get that moving in the right direction. I should have the other one later today.
I'd make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign participating release form for additional opioid settlements.
Second motion, we were motion to the second to authorize the chair to sign participation release form for additional opioid settlements. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, what this amounts to is companies that made products, they've taken them, won the cases, and now we will be receiving. I have a list of the drugs and stuff on my phone, but I can't even pronounce some of them that, you know, came in and people were using. I, I don't know, but anyway, uh, we'll be getting more money in the form of an opioid account. I suppose is how the state and public end up running it. We can do without them. They can just give it to us for it.
Same rules.
Yeah, when?
How much a cut did they take out of the last one, Richard?
Fifty. The state is setting on fifty percent of the opioid settlement for fifteen years. So.
What are they doing with it after the fifteen years?
What are they doing with it now? That's, you know, that, that's what bothers me. I mean, if, if they got this on an interest account, they're making big bucks. So.
Uh, we have a motion in a second to authorize the chair to sign the participation release form for additional opioid settlements. Any other discussion? Hearing then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would agree that, you know, I know there's one coming, there should be another one coming. Basically, they're both the same kind, only different brand names on them.
And then before Megan talks about her flood update, um, you guys know, I'll be out for afternoon and Thursday to attend the annual League of Cities Conference. Um, I'll be a guest panelist to talk about city community and other collaborations. Um, and then also next week we'll be having a wellness committee meeting and a department meeting.
Update on the nineteen flood funds.
Yeah. Um, so you guys all know, we met with FEMA, you know, they're looking at some um some money that, you know, we've received during the buyouts of the twenty nineteen floods. Um, you know, Richard kind of spoke on it at the last meeting. Um, he's just been talking to people and I told him I would come in and kind of just give an update as to where we are. We have until December to kind of sort through everything. Um, I don't think it'll take till December. I think we'll be able to figure it out well ahead of that. Um, the grand closeout is in December. That's when, you know, that's why we're going through this. Um, so right now it's just kind of sorting through all the money that we received. You know, we were getting money from, you know, three or four different pots at the time, plus it was right around COVID. So there was, you know, COVID money coming, I mean, money was just flowing into the county. So it's just sorting through all the deposits, um, organizing all the buyouts, making sure we receive the money that we were supposed to receive, making sure that, you know, um.
You got it in the right category, that.
Yeah, and find, and just making sure that it's in the right spot. I did find some um CDBG money that was um accounted for in the East and West Mission Abbotna project that had been going on for a few years at the time, but it was actually for the buyouts. So I have a feeling I'll find a few more of those in there. Um, just kind of, you know, more or less, I don't suspect there's any, you know, wrongdoing with the money as of right now. But I just think it was more just kind of administrative, you know, it's, again, there was a lot coming in, you know, it all gets confusing, it all kind of, especially when they're similar amounts. But Richard had, you know, like I said, asked me to kind of come in and give an update as to where we were and, you know, I could come in again in a couple weeks, a month, whatever, and you guys know if I found anything we want, so.
The first or second week that they asked that we made sure we have all the information to close out on the grant for the second week of December?
Yes, yeah, so it's.
December fifteenth, they mentioned.
That might have been, might have been one of those, right?
That gives us, that still gives us fifteen days to the end of the year if we get a pinch or something, you know.
Okay, so we have till the end of the.
Yeah, and I, like I said, I don't think, once I get through, I think the deposit portion of it, you know, the receipts that we got, every, all the money that came in, everything else will kind of fall into place. Right now, like I said, it's just, there were a lot of buyouts. We had, I think, twelve or thirteen different buyout groups. You know, with a minimum of three or four people per group. There's some groups of seven. So there were quite a few, quite a few properties to sort through, make sure that, you know, what the property was appraised for, you know, is what was paid and, and all that kind of stuff. So that's just kind of the time-consuming part. But once that gets done, and I'm about, probably halfway through those, so.
Thank you. Thank you for helping to a close.
Absolutely, no problem.
Katie Dodds, election deputy, filing post-election audit certification with Board of Supervisors.
Yes, um, so we had our special election in Malvern on Tuesday. Um, after every election, the Secretary of State randomly selects a um precinct to audit to make sure that the machines ran correctly.
Sure.
So um, in this election, we had two precincts, our absentee precinct and the Malvern precinct. The Malvern precinct was chosen. Um, so you already have the document um in your packets that shows that we conducted a audit that shows that machines ran correctly, that a hand count matched the machine totals exactly. So.
Good.
I just have to file that with you, so that's.
What?
Thank you.
Just discussion, no action on that? Okay. Uh, consideration some formal action, twenty-twenty-five special election, Malvern to fill a vacancy canvas.
Um, so then this is just the signing of the official results of the election. Um, so we had two winners, Donna and Miller, and then a write-in candidate, Rob Gilreath. And then um, the writing candidate had fifty-one votes, uh, Donna had eighty-two. The other candidate on the ballot, Jen Aslan, had twenty-six. We had a scattering of five write-in votes. And we had forty-eight under, yeah, total forty-eight undervotes and no overvotes for the selection. So I have three copies that just need to be signed. And if you're signing blue, we'll just ship out.
Need a motion to.
Yes, we need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five special election, Malvern to fill a vacancy canvas.
Second.
Motion to the second to approve the twenty-five special election, Malvern to fill a vacancy canvas. Any discussion? Hearing then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we start signing.
I heard that Mr. Ryan was saying she just wanted to write in votes.
Yes, yes.
You probably know, but. Ah, down the blue ones.
You still have to, you have more to sign.
What do we sign? There's not even a thing.
Just on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
So the first thing you're signing is the act of votes. Um, and then the second thing you're signing is the statement of votes passed. Um, and we're signing your copies. And Amber, you will sign as well.
And if anybody wanted to, they could offer a recount like tomorrow night, right?
Tomorrow. There was a recent change um with the new recount. I think it passed file ninety fifty-eight, changed that from a three-day window to a one-day window for this particular race.
For special elections or for city councils?
Um, for, I believe it's for all state and lower races, federal races are still. Or minors. Can you even understand very good?
It is, it's much quicker, thank you.
Great, that is all you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. New business. Ms. Amber, you say we're gonna start using Teams at the next meeting?
Yes, we're gonna start using Teams, I believe. Um, we'll put out the new link to access it. Um, we'll have to have a moderator that watches to make sure that we don't get anyone trying to interrupt the meeting, but um, we're gonna start moving to that next week. So we're gonna put, we'll put something out on the on the agenda, we'll have the link on the agenda, and then we might have some notes on exactly how to access it, that's the way, so.
We're, we're not. Are we planning on allowing public comments?
During public comment.
Yep.
Using that?
Yep.
Okay.
That's why we have to have a moderator, so that we can mute people if they go out of order or if, um, they become.
Actually.
And really?
Thank you.
Yeah, that's why we'll have a moderator to watch. The, the moderator also will be letting people in. So if somebody has been muted or we decided, we, this shouldn't, should never happen, but if we had to say, you know what, you have to leave the meeting, the moderator then wouldn't let that person back in. Make sure.
They can watch this comment, it does not count it.
Yep.
Anything else, guys?
Uh, only thing, I think I've mentioned, we need a letter of support from uh SWPCO on this uh transportation to Jenny Edmondson or Hot County, Mills County residents that have appointments at hospitals and things. It's strictly a grant-funded that we have to, they have to go through the DOT to qualify and they're asking all the cities and everybody in the counties to write a letter of support for to pass on the DOT. I'm pretty sure they'll get the grant, but it's something that's needed because there's a lot of elderly people. You know, your neighbors can only do so much. There's a lot of elderly people that do not have children living in the area. So I think it's important that, you know, I have a letter for them if you want an. I have a letter for them if you want it, Amber.
Yes, please, thank you.
That's all I have.
Anything else?
Teams, once the meetings are recorded, we're gonna upload them to make much to adjourn at nine sixteen.
Stay here all day, or you want to
I'm I got too many meetings to go to.
I'll say goodbye in a second, I'm still eating doughnuts.
You're all invited upstairs, jury trial.
Jury trial, thank you. All those in favor? I'm just messing with you, Mr. Cherry.